2016, would you rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Happy New Year, everyone. One announcement before we begin. Board member Powell is excused from tonight's meeting, and that will take us to item number two, approval of the December 21st, 2015 minutes. Motion to accept made by Vice Chair Barnes. Is there a second? Made by Ms. Gualyumi. Any corrections? Vice Chair Barnes?
Page seven, line 311, and it's smarter balanced ED. It was right in the beginning, I just missed it right there. So, and that's all I had.
Mr. Schneider?
Two really small ones. If I can turn the page. Page two, line number 81, said Board Member Schneider asked if food safety guidelines that are now met and retained when new purchases are made. So, saying met and retained. And then, the second one is on page five. Line 221, Board Member Schneider asked when there would be any cost savings. I didn't, I knew there would be, but I just wanted to know sort of when they would be reading. So, changed the if to a when, and that's it.
Great. Any others? Ms. Gualyumi?
I'm just one on page seven, line 328. It says Board Member Gualyumi asks what parent feedback has been to date, and then it goes on to another sentence which says it has been minimal and most of the parent questions were answered at parent-teacher conferences. I would just insert Assistant Superintendent McLaughlin stated, so it wasn't part of my question. That was the response.
Thank you. And I had a couple. On page one, line 18, if we can include the word contemporaneously, because that's in the RSA regarding the telephone meeting in terms of hearing and speaking to each other. And then additionally, on line 21, if we can include the town that Board Member Powell was in, which it was Brandon, B-R-A-N-D-O-N, Florida, which he stated to us. And this one is really, really minor. On page 72, you're quoting, we're quoting, line two. Did I say page 72? Go right to it, if you would. Page two, line 72, thank you. At the end of the line, we should just close the quote for the question. And then, I know I had others. Page eight, line 368, not to be confused with page 368. Vice Chair Barnes requested, not is requested. And then, page 10, line 452, after, at Merrimack High School, if we can strike commended the students so that the sentence reads, Superintendent Chaffrey commended the students at Merrimack High School on their dedication to academic rigor. And I believe that's all I had. So with that, we will put the minutes to a vote. All those in favor of accepting the December 21st minutes, December 21st, 2015 minutes, as amended, say aye. Opposed? None? The motion carries 4-0-0. And what is the student rep's opinion?
In favor.
Thank you, sir. And that will take us to item number three, public participation. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board. All we ask is that you come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone looking to address the board under public participation? Seeing none, we'll close public participation and move to item number four, the consent agenda. Dr. McLaughlin?
Thank you. On consent tonight, the following items, approval of animals in the school policy and approval to construct a bridge on Greater Woods Trail for $1,000 from the School District Environmental Education and Forest Management Fund.
Great. Is there a motion? Mr. Schneider?
A move that we accept the consent agenda, Ezra.
Is there a second? Made by Ms. Gualyumi. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? None? The motion carries 4-0-0. And the student reps?
In favor.
Thank you, sir. And that will take us to item number five on tonight's agenda, request by trustees of the trust funds for a proposed warrant article to charge management fees to the related capital reserve funds. I will invite to the table two of the three trustees, Mr. Chris Christensen and Mr. Bill It's always a pleasure to have the trustees join us.
You just want our money. Actually, a lot of it's your money.
We thank you for managing it.
In any event, let me give you a little bit of history. First of all, I think you have some of this new packets, so bear with me for repeating, but for the people that didn't get packets tonight, for many, many years, we trustees around the state paid management fees out of income on capital reserve funds. And the law allowed, or specifically mentioned, the public deposit investment pool and mutual funds where the fees were there, but they were kind of hidden, and they didn't say much about anything else. With that in mind, some towns were putting, in school districts and village districts, were putting a line item in the budget to pay the fees because there was an assumption on their part that the capital reserve fund should not, I don't want to say suffer a loss, but suffer any diminution because of fees or something else, so it would have to come out of the general fund. That was pretty cumbersome, and you had to do multiple transactions over the course of the year and so forth. So, a year and a half ago, this was codified that we could accept current practice, if you will, but that the town meeting or school district meeting had to approve the payment of the fund, or payment of the management fees. We hire a bank to invest all of our capital reserve funds, and they charge a fee of 25 basis points. So, that's basically it. There is a thought in some circles that as a preventative measure, if you had any suspicion that the warrant article might not pass, that you should put a line item in the budget with a dollar in it, you could follow through. But it's really very cumbersome to bill and then get reimbursed and back and forth for a few hundred dollars or less per month, and we hope that you would support the language of the warrant article that has been vetted. The town council has already passed it because as a charter community, we can, town council can do that without going to town meeting. But for the school district and the village district, we're going on to the warrant article this year with the language that you have. And, do you want to add anything?
I think you've said it all.
Questions, I guess?
That was a great summary. Are there any questions from the board? I'll tee one up, or one or two. In terms of the amount that should be budgeted, say the warrant article doesn't pass, and I would hope that it would, because it's my understanding this has been existing practice. We're just, as a town, approving it to continue its existing practice, right? We've never paid for management fees out of the general fund, have we?
Not to my knowledge, no.
So, how much should we budget if we were to conservatively say we could cover the fees next year for the school district side if we had to add this?
You have, right now, about, as of November 30th, we don't have December figures yet, 700, excuse me, $665,000, $670,000 in capital reserve funds, so 25 basis points comes up to about $1,750.
Okay.
If you added more, or the, or if that amount changed, then of course, the fee could be more or less.
Sure. Somewhere in that range, though. Okay, great. Any other questions? Comments? No. Seems very straightforward to us. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate your bringing the matter to our attention, and as I said at the beginning, for your steadfast and expert management of the trust funds. Thank you, guys.
I guess you'll need a vote to put it on the warrant?
So, we will be taking up warrant articles at probably our meeting, January 12th. Thank you, Superintendent, for reminding me. I have to shuffle through my papers with the schedule, so that's coming up. So, this is really under advisement, and we'll take it up at that time. But I don't, looking around the table, I don't see it being an issue.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good reminder. And that will take us to item number six on the agenda, formal hearing on technology, library, and media budget for 2016, 2017. I would invite to the table our Director of Technology, Library, and Media Services, Ms. Nancy Rose. Hello, Ms. Rose?
Hello. Happy New Year to everybody.
And to you.
Thank you. So, I was planning to just give a little brief overview and then take questions, if that's appropriate.
That's wonderful.
So, I hope that it's seen as a fairly uneventful budget this year. We're just working on the ever-increasing demand for more technology, as well as improved technology for students and also to support instruction, focusing on improving access to digital tools for both parties. And also, I'm looking to improve the situation at both the upper elementary through replacement and the middle school through some addition possibly. The software account probably stands out a little bit. That is an area that I think we'll probably expect to see growth, because there's more that's being requested in the area of online tools, content, tool, assessment technology, all kinds of things in that area. Plus, those are areas that tend to grow every year because it's a recurring cost. They just raise the rates. And then also, we're experiencing some changes in the way the federal E-rate law works, so they're changing what they focus on. They're moving away from web hosting and some of the things that they had funded. They're shifting more towards the core infrastructure and networking and wireless and access to Internet, improving bandwidth. And we just will continue to focus through the capital improvement plan on upgrading the infrastructure and then service to devices. And I thought about service to the desktop, because that tends to be the way the language breaks down, from the service to the district, to the building, to the desktop. However, many of these devices are not desktops, so just trying to be mindful of that. And then, all of this is really focused on the technology piece of things, but as well, we're looking at always integrating technology and information skills into the curriculum, making sure that students are good consumers of information, good digital citizenships, good digital citizens, sorry, and the materials that support those initiatives. So, a lot of sustaining the change that's come through the planning and the capital improvement plan, which has really been a nice shot in the arm, but just keeping that going. So, that's all I had to offer up at front, so.
Wonderful. So, I think some board members had submitted questions.
Oh, that's right.
I don't know if you've got those with you.
I do.
Okay, wonderful.
So, I'll just walk through those.
Sure.
I'll just walk through, these came from Mr. Schneider. The first question was regarding the telephone and library budget. Is the reduction of the budgeted amount directly attributed to the voice-over IP expansion? Will this drop in additional years based on the additional expansion or upgrade of the VoIP per the plan? This coincides also with one that came from Ms. Barnes regarding the use of the three-year average, which is typically how we've been doing the budgeting. To both of those, the, we just finished the VoIP project, so the district is now fully on the new system. There's service contracts that come into play. We're using digital service now, and so the long-distance rates are different. So, we're still monitoring how those costs are going to change. They probably do, will go down. But the other impact is that E-rate is funding less voice, and they're phasing voice support out. So, we've been able to discount what we charge or what we account for for voice coverage, but that's shifting away. But we pay less, so it's kind of...
Do you mind explaining what the federal E-rate program is and the cost change this year?
The E-rate program is from the Federal Communications Commission, I believe, and it's a federal program aimed at improving Internet and communication services for libraries and public schools, or schools. And it is administered through an agency at the national level, and then it filters down into districts, and it previously supported, at the level that we qualify, things like the Internet service, the connectivity between the buildings, the voice service, regardless of how it was delivered, communication tools such as web hosting, things like that. But just this last year, they've changed, and they're moving away from, they're phasing out voice coverage over several years, and they're also phasing out, or actually just deliberately, they just dropped web hosting. And they're putting more emphasis behind the infrastructure in buildings, between buildings and to buildings, as well as Wi-Fi. They hadn't focused on Wi-Fi or wireless equipment or service prior. So, they're trying to make it more modern. They've increased the funding, but the district qualifies at about a 40% rate. It's based on free and reduced lunch rates. So, as those numbers are reported, that impacts what we qualify for, and then we budget based on what those numbers come back as.
Thank you.
So, sure.
Mr. Chevanel?
Yeah, it's just an interesting piece of trivia. If you have a phone bill from Verizon for your home phone, part of what you're paying in the taxes and other charges is in that, and so that's what's really funding the E-rate, your telephone bill from Verizon. So, if you see a universal service fee or something like that, that's what it's for.
Did not know that. Thank you.
There you go. So, that's, I think we're still monitoring what the impacts of those different factors are going to be on the voice and just see how that goes. I do anticipate it will continue to go down. It's just not a, not certain how much that will be. The next question was regarding the software line and whether the increase was a combination of previous items that were in other lines, and is this about the level of run rate we'll see in the future? The, it is not a representation of any combined lines. It's actually additional software. There's some things that come up on a biannual basis, so we didn't pay it last year, we have to pay it this next year. And then also reflecting the change in the coverage for web hosting for the E-rate policy. So, I do, I'm just, this is a line that I think we're not going to see stay stagnant, because I think it's the hot area, education, software, and services. There's just no way around, that's the market. And the demand for it is up. People, teachers are requesting tools. We're looking at more things to go online. We're looking at learning management, things like that.
Mr. Schneider?
So, as you see this growing and expanding over time, do you see it taking away from some of the things we're seeing in individual schools, things that maybe are hard copy today that are budgeted, like in the classroom or whatever? Do you see this more centralized sort of billing and licensing, more of a trend in your central as opposed to in the buildings?
This is an area that Dr. McLaughlin and I have been talking about recently, finding a way, because currently, we don't have a planning process that intersects these areas now that they're so critical to each other. So, the technology, the information, the curriculum. And so, that's our next, sort of, rather than tech planning, it's more the integration planning among the three areas. And that's exactly what I would want to be looking at, is if you're going to do something in this area, moving in a more digital direction, what does this alleviate in another area? So, and it's such a moving target, because you have to be ready to move in the direction as well as make the decision for the, I mean, it's a big area, and I know this is what districts are struggling with, and you want to do it right, so.
It makes me wonder what the 21st century equivalent of rebinding books will be.
Repairing a battery?
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
I would just offer this. When I entered the workforce 20, I won't say how many years ago, but yeah, I was actually going to have to go higher. You know, the talk at that time was about paperless offices, right? That these computers were going to get on your desktop, and, you know, we wouldn't need paper at all anymore. And has there been a reduction? Yeah, I think there has, but I think figuring out exactly what that's going to look like is tough. It's going to require some planning.
Dr. McLaughlin, the post-it notes on this.
Paper full office.
I'm not touching that. So, the next question was additional equipment, and you said, you asked, the additional equipment goes along with classroom projectors already installed, and we're wondering more about what that is. Is it smart boards, et cetera? So, this is the area where we cover smart technology, the interactive technology. That's where we buy the MIMIO teachbars, kind of, depends on what teachers want. Also, there's a lot of teachers using iPads combined with Apple TVs, because then they can wirelessly project that. Document cameras this year were the big ticket. This, that's, like I've said this before, they're kind of a safe entry point for teachers to move into using technology. They're very interactive, they're very easy to use, they're very gratifying, very engaging for students, and you can do a lot with them, but it's also something that's very easy to start using and exploring with. The area that I think might be worth mentioning is, in the elementary libraries this year, we're experimenting with interactive projectors rather than doing smart boards. So, the projector itself is the interactive piece, and you interact with it. It creates an infrared field over the whiteboard, and you can use your hands to manage the, what's displayed. So, your hands almost become a remote mouse. And so, that's been fun, and we were able to do that, starting with what we did with the renovation of the library at Thornton's Ferry. That's what we did, and they're just now starting to come down in price. So, as we are looking at replacements, which gets to a question that Shannon raised, we're be able to look into doing more with that. And so, there's a different level of install cost with it, but they're really, kind of, I think this is the way we're going, rather than installing the gigantic boards that are an entire piece of equipment and very expensive.
And this line item is, because it's the library, this is shared equipment for the school, not for an individual classroom or a teacher.
All of the accounts are both library and technology at this point.
Okay.
Yeah. So, it's just, yeah, I think this is mostly what goes into classrooms. It's just, in this case, it was a central place to put a new technology that could be used by all to learn about it, and the teachers could come in and play with it, rather than putting it in one room, because we have found that when we put trial technology in one room, that is where it stays.
Well, that was going to be my question, was how do you manage the demand if one teacher wants this, another teacher wants that? Or are they getting it individually, or is it trial and you've answered?
It's interesting, the buildings tend to take on kind of a personality with what they like, because they share ideas. So, the MIMIO teachbars are heavily used at the CATA four schools. They really like them. The teachers have gotten into using them. They understand how they work, and they do what they want to do. The upper elementary has used more iPads that they mount on stands, and then they use Apple TVs with those that are connected to the projectors. The middle school is just moving into, they're using the document cameras more heavily. Everybody is very much into the document cameras, but, and then at the high school, it depends on the department, what they want to use or what is most effective. So, that's where the discussion with who is looking for what they want becomes so critical. And that's, it's another thing about this area, like with getting the projectors installed, there's this idea of saturation, which will include maintenance and replacement and all of that. But with this area, there's introductory level things. There's, now I want to try to do this other thing, so I might want something different. I might find that I had this and it wasn't working, so I gave it to my neighbor, and now I want to try this other thing. So, there's a lot of experimentation and innovation, and I think it's fostered a better understanding of what people want. So, we have, like at the high school, the English department kind of came together and decided that they wanted to use iPads with Apple TVs, and agreed on it because there was some trial and error, and they figured out what they did and didn't want to be able to achieve. So, it's very organic in how it's pulling together. And then, let's see, you, there was another piece of that question that talked about the allocation per building, and it really is, I divide the money up based on rough enrollments, and the projectors were moving along just based on the numbers of classroom and trying to get the classroom saturated. And there were some buildings that got ahead in a way, because they might have had parent group money that did something. So, I was really trying to make sure that we were moving everybody in lockstep. The projector installs are right at about 90 to 95%, depending on the building, but they're up there, we're very close to being done. The next question is about the voice-over IP line specifically, and that the amount that's in there represents lease payments plus a little bit of maintenance and replacement. So, it's the lease payments that will taper off, but then, you know, replacement items or additional phones, things like that. There was a question about the COSIN membership. That's the Consortium of School Networking. That's a national organization that supports education technology directors, and this is, I think, an ongoing expense. That's a district membership. It supports all of the technology and library staff that want to take advantage, and they offer support with policy development, infrastructure designs and considerations, a lot of training aimed at how to do best practice for this, that, and the other thing in school districts, especially, they really focus on small, medium, large, and they call them mega, school districts, so that you can kind of find things, resources that are good for the size of your district, which becomes really critical when you start to consider how, we're all solving the same problems. It's useful to have an organization to kind of help consolidate and pull that together. So, that's what that is. And then Shannon's question was about the shift from the repair budget to the replacement. And I think it might just be worth mentioning, when we put the capital improvement plan in place, we sort of folded what had been a replacement equipment budget into the CIP. So, it kind of went away. I think the line's still there, but we don't, we haven't been using it, because we've been shifting from the installation of, to the installation of projectors from overheads and TVs. So, because we were replacing outdated technology, we just sort of took that and moved it into the CIP, and at some point, that will have to probably come back. But the repairs is probably always going to be there. That's everything. It's projectors, it's the different kinds of equipment, the document cameras, sometimes the jacks get monkey, you know? So, it's just any, everything breaks, because we use it in classrooms that are crowded and full of stuff. So, that's what that, that one was that. And then, you asked about the three-year average for the voice-over IP. And I just, I think for now, Matt and I talked about it, I think for now, that's probably going to be the way to keep calculating until we get a few years out from having completely rolled over and get completely a sense of the way the long distance works out.
Great. Vice Chair Barnes?
Along the lines of my question as well, regarding repair and replacement, I know there's a lot of technology on the home level, and of course, it's very specialized, some of the stuff you're dealing with. Sometimes it's just cheaper when something breaks to replace it, because by the time you have someone come in that's a specialist in that area to repair it, the parts, the, you know, the labor, that sometimes a replacement unit actually ends up being cheaper.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, would that ever be the case, I guess, in the educational technology that you're implementing?
Yeah, and, well, the other thing is, we had an excellent repair person who retired from his third retirement, I think. He did this, and he was fantastic and didn't charge very much. So, we're looking at alternatives there, but... So, we're looking at alternatives there, but you're also looking at planned obsolescence. I mean, they design things to break or to just be easier to replace than to continue to use. As much as I hate seeing that, it is what it is.
So, so really, it would, wouldn't it be unrealistic for us to see more purchase than repair going forward on, on some of these technology items? Gotcha, okay, thanks.
So, that was the end of the questions that I received ahead of time. Are there any others?
Any other questions from the board? Ms. Gualyumi.
I was wondering if you could take just a moment and talk to us about what goes into purchasing a lot of the supplies and maybe how the prices might relate, if there's any breaks for education or if there's any types of rebates, warranties, things that, you know, how we know we're buying it from the best place? If you could just talk a little bit about that.
With the, the bigger ticket items, I have several vendors that I get quotes from. And it kinda depends who has a relationship with which, with which manufacturer or provider. Andy probably knows how that all works. So, it kinda depends who has a better relationship and historically who we've gotten deals from. I tend to stay in same brand lines because it's easier to support and keep things up to date. Then there are lots of benefits for education, more on the software side probably than the hardware side, but on the hardware side as well. And I think we're at the advantage right now with Google and Microsoft, they're duking it out to win the one-to-one war. And they're getting very competitive in how they both price, support, develop what they put out there. And so, that just works out for us. So, so that is at play also behind the scenes. And then supplies is really driven by the technology in a classroom and what a teacher's trying to connect to what. I, so much of it is cables, connectors, adapters. We find that there's things that you would never even imagine, there's some buildings that longer distances on some of the cables just don't work. In another building, it'll be completely fine, but you know, some of these buildings are very old and they've got a lot of metal inside the walls. So, we just are constantly sort of figuring out the thing that will solve it and, and then I always shop around. But I have a pretty good sense of who's, who's good, got the best pricing for which things. And then we tend to do as much bulk as we can. Is that what you were hoping for?
Yeah, and then I had one other question, you had spoken earlier about kind of the, the focus more on the infrastructure versus maybe in the cloud. With the, what was the term that was used?
The E-rate?
E-rate, thank you. Um, is there anything about kind of that? I guess it sounds like maybe a little bit of a shift that would affect our, our overall plan, our overall technology plan?
I, maybe it wasn't clear. So, it's not a shift away from using the cloud, it's more improvement in infrastructure to improve the access in the buildings. So, it's improving the bandwidth that the district gets, the connectivity between the buildings. So, we have a direct fiber connection between the high school and the Master Cola complex and the three administrative buildings. But for the ferries and the middle school, we have to pay a monthly for that service.
Ah, got it, okay.
So, it's looking at ways to build up our infrastructure so that we own more of that and can then not pay as many monthlies and also to leverage the internal physical infrastructure to support wireless. Because the wireless is only ever gonna be almost as good as what you have physically. But a lot of our physical is still outdated and we've been working on improving that and doing cabling. Like with the voiceover IP, we were able to upgrade a lot of switches and improve cabling. Then gigabit, you know, faster technology comes along. Little bit too expensive here in the last two years, finally coming down. So, it's like a, a moving target of getting ourselves as modern as we can be without breaking the bank. And then also taking advantage of the way the programs are structured.
Okay. Um, do any, does any of that affect what we need to consider for then our technology plan and at least the near future, the next couple of years?
Um, I don't think so, because the, the E-rate program is gonna be a big part of it. And it's moving in the right direction for us. It supports more of the internal, what's in the walls, which it hadn't done for us before. That used to be tier-two level funding for the very impoverished districts. And they've moved that up now to, to a broader base. I think they realize that a lot of buildings are full of really old wiring and until they help us replace that, even a fairly well-to-do community isn't gonna be able to upgrade that. So, that's why they're, they're shifting and they, they've made some changes over the last few years, but this is the most pronounced change. And so, that's, that's gonna help a lot. And then what we were able to do with the voiceover IP put us in a very good position. So, that's kinda, all of the things coming together is what is kinda moving us forward. So, it is a moving target, but it kinda can see what's on the horizon. So, I think we're in pretty good shape.
Okay, good, thanks.
Could you just add one thing? Yes, Nancy said, E-rate for, I don't know how many, is never used to support internal connections at all. So, that's a really huge change. And the, the voiceover IP thing is, is, as well as, you know, potentially saving us money long-term with the cost of the calls, it's also reducing our need to replace hundreds of thousands of dollars' worth of phone switches that were tied to the old Centrex system that we had at the high school, that we had at Master Cola, that we had at all the schools. So, we're getting more reliable, up-to-date, current voice and then voicemail than we had before with those older switches that were reaching end of life anyway.
The systems are integrated with all of our other systems, so it's not a one-off. And I think that's the biggest part, is it used to be that those were all supported by outside vendors because they're all different systems in the buildings and have different life expectancies and they have proprietary equipment. Where now, all of the buildings are using the same system and it's part of our entire network infrastructure and we manage it internally. And it becomes part of the maintenance of everything as opposed to this other thing you have to think about.
Any other questions from the board? Talk just briefly, one of the questions I, I get asked is about grants that are out there, large companies, like the Microsofts, the Googles, et cetera, I won't name other large technology companies. Are there grants out there, are they worth pursuing, is that something that you've looked into?
It's an area that I definitely, probably, I would like to spend more time in. Frequently, what I find is that they're really looking for the, the districts that are more, the higher free and reduced. So, the effort versus reward is a little tenuous, it's kinda hard to say. So, I think that's the challenge. And there's frequently small, like outfit a classroom kinda grants that I know teachers go for, things like that. At my, I, I would be more focused on something that can do a systemic change that would be worth a bigger impact. But it's definitely an area that I would like to look at more. I think one of the things that isn't so much on the grant side, but because of how aggressive they are with pricing for education, we've benefited from the Microsoft discounting. They changed the model for the three sixty-five pricing, so that's got unlimited access and storage for school districts and the members of school districts and we, and staff have access to office for free and, and students as well. Autodesk made their suite of products free for education. So, a few years ago, when we were looking at upgrading the lab in the high school, we, I was planning on about twelve thousand dollars in software purchases that I didn't have to buy. So, there's, the, there, we're not getting the grants as much as they are all recognizing that if you, yeah, if you make students, consumers of these products when they leave school, that's the expectation that they will have, that they will have access to these things in their workplace, at their schools. So, I mean, it's smart on their, it's like the supply chain of the consumer. So, we've benefited on that side in ways that have been very helpful, so.
That's great, thank you.
But definitely, I'd like to work more on the grant side of things.
Excellent. Mr. Schneider.
It's interesting you said that because I know Google Docs are one thing that are used in schools a lot. And we're now starting to use it, you know, in the corporate world. And we're, I think we're pushing it to extremes that schools never did before because there are some situations where three people are editing the same document and it doesn't handle it the way that maybe school kids would do it, so. But it, but it's interesting because it is starting to do exactly what you described, to permeate up, so.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you for a thorough presentation and for coming out tonight.
Thank you for having me, thank you.
And that will take us to item number seven, formal hearing on special services budget for two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. I invite to the table, Mr. John Fabrizio, our Director of Special Services. Welcome, Mr. Fabrizio.
Good evening, happy new year, all of you.
You too.
It's always interesting to follow Nancy, it really is, and it's been a, a little tradition we have going now. So, um, no, I think that Nancy used a very interesting word of organic. And the term organic means things are grown out of necessity. And it's, it's very interesting that I would follow her in doing that and especially all the information she, all the things she talked about around software and around things that are changing in our world. And I think that you'll hear somewhere permeated through my rather long introduction that I have here versus Nancy's very short one, that there is a lot of similarities in some ways that, that are, that are permeating both the world of technology and how we're helping kids integrate more into schools using technology through special ed. So, it's very interesting how that's happening. So, I'll begin. Good evening and thank you for another opportunity presenting the special services budget for the proposed two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year. As I've stated before, special ed service budget is different from other department budgets. Tonight, I will present a budget that is child-specific and is built from the students' needs. It's grown from, from their needs as we go in a meeting. It's based on a lot of federal and state laws and regulations. Tonight, I will begin as I have in the past and I'm gonna overview two major laws that influence kind of what's in this budget. And I'll start tonight with that overview and then I will answer a few questions I received from a couple of the board members. And then I'll go on after that point to certainly any other questions that I'm open that I can answer. So, two ma- major regulations that all school, all schools who receive federal funds must adhere to are free and appropriate education, or FAP, and a regulation of least restricted environment, or LRE. Free and appropriate education. FAP is a right that must be made available to eligible students with disabilities. It's provided at the public expense, provided in conformity with the IEP, it meets state standards. Includes students with disabilities who have been suspected or, or expected of having any kind of disability. It must be decided on a case-to-case basis. It must meet all state standards and federal standards. It must also always offer FAP. FAP is determined by the team of educators, the parent and the adult student and/or the adult student, excuse me. So, least restricted environment, LRE, it's PL three hundred point one-one-four dash sixteen, if anyone would like to look that up. And I'll give you a brief overview of what least restricted environment really means. It's the maximum extent appropriate to children with a disability included with children in a public or private institution or other care facilities are educated with children of their, who are non-disabled. So, it means we have to do our best part to educate all students together. If they have disability or don't have disability, it's our right, it's the children's right and all children's right to have that opportunity first. So, that we have to offer, sometimes we have to offer special classes, separate schooling or other, other, or others that remove children with disabilities from regular education environments. And it's only based in the severity of that child and severity of the disability. We have a, we have an, we have an obligation to educate all students in the regular classroom as the first placement and the first choice in the IEP meeting. It must be considered. Each public agency must ensure that the continuum of alternative placements within the facility is available to meet the needs of the children with disabilities, special education services. And you'll know in our schools, we've talked often about the PAST program, the GET SET program, the Learning Center program, the Multi-Disabled program, the medically fragile program, the program that we've done in partnership classrooms and constellations for our ABA, ABA students who receive applied behavior analysis. We've talked about these programs we have in district. We need to by law offer those within our public institutions. So, we must, must make provisions, we must make provisions also for supplemental services such as resource rooms, inter-instruction, speech pathologists, occupational therapists, visual impaired students. We must make sure that we are constantly offering services within our schools, it's called my related services. And you often see that in budget, we have to offer those again by law to try to educate students as much as possible in the regular classroom. And then if an IEP team decides a child cannot be educated in the regular classroom with supplementary aids or services, they must consider other options such as specialized classes, specialized, then we must go to specialized schools, possible home instruction, possible institutional hospitalization instruction, possible tutoring. Whatever that team determines is appropriate for that child based on their needs, so it goes through a level of continual services. Any questions about those two laws? Thank you. The overall projected number of students is, students has stayed steady over the last four years that I presented this, this thing. We've had a slight decrease as we've gone along. For example, in twelve thirteen, it was six hundred eighty-five students. And thirteen fourteen, six hundred eighty students, fourteen fifteen, six hundred and seventy-six students. And currently, I'm proposing about six hundred sixty-five students. So, you see, there's been a progressive decline as we, we've gone along. The percentage has stayed about the same, it's hovering around seventeen point five, seventeen point six. We stayed in that realm, but it is something that has stayed pretty consistent throughout the years as we've moved forward. But it is, it's nice to see a decline where I know many districts are increasing in those numbers, we've been able to stay in a steady decline. As we look through the budget, please keep in mind that we're projecting a little bit of the future for students who progress with, who have severe needs. All these teams still have to meet within this year for their IEP, they have determined what the person's individual plan is. We are right now projecting forward what those teams will decide in a lot of ways. If a current student moves out of our Mary Mexico district, the good news is we are not responsible for the funding of that student. The bad news is if a student moves into our district, we are responsible for the funding of that student. And that kinda goes along with what special ed and what our responsibilities are. Overall budget reflects about a two percent increase this year. And some of that, I'll go through a few items, that will cause that two percent increase. And I'll talk about some other things that really may not be in here. To continue with our multi-year plan, to purchase split air conditioning units, we are asking for two additional units be placed. These will be used to meet, these will be, used to meet the needs of our students that have medical needs and climate control needs within their IEPs. Currently, we have portable systems, what we've tried to use and we have moved along with those. They are very heavily, heavily, heavily reliant on the maintenance, the maintenance personnel. They are heavily reliant on it not getting too hot because they don't, they don't sometimes effectively cool the room. We have to use multiple units to cool the room. So, along with Tom Tussow, we have researched and we have looked and we've said, okay, what's the best thing to meet our needs? We've looked at roof units, we've looked at outside units, we've looked at, we've looked at central systems, we've looked at a lot of different units. And what we came to the conclusion was, because of the ease of install, the economic, the economical piece to the, the price, we decided these split systems, which we currently had in place in a lot of our computer labs, would be efficient to help us within the places we have. We've installed one over at Reed's Ferry Elementary School in our multi-disabled preschool program. And we saw the benefits of this last summer. When it did get warm, that unit went on, it was very nice climate within the, within that room. And we often utilize that room when we had kids. Throughout the building on those very hot days, we brought them in and we tried to be as creative as we could to utilize the room that was, that was definitely climate-controlled. And again, last year, this item was removed from our budget, so we're asking this year to place a unit at, I wanna place one unit at Thornton's Ferry Elementary School in there, in where we have the medically fragile students. And then another one at the upper elementary school to start with where we have those students progress into the multi-disabled program at the upper elementary school. So, those are the two places that I'm targeting to do that. We've also inquired, asked an increase in the SPED computer software account to upgrade some of our automated systems when it comes to doing our psychological testing. of our automated systems when it comes to doing our psychological testing. This will, as Nancy mentioned before with software and with, with things that are going on right now, right now, we are going automated with a lot of things that are happening. We can't get the materials, the protocols, the things that we used to get prior to the previous years. This year, we put a slight increase in last year, about $4,000 to be able to start that process. We moved at the elementary school, and at the elementary school, starting some, on some assessments that are computer-based. Basically, what happens is there's two iPads. The student has an iPad, the psychologist has an iPad. And they work through doing the assessment that way. Two reasons why it's more effective. One, it scores much quicker. Two, it scores along the way. So if a psychologist is testing a child, then they may have a question around some reading issues. They can do, and that comes up right away. It is, it is almost subtotally as it goes through. They can take another avenue and offer additional assessments in that area to dig deeper into that piece, where prior to, with paper pencil, they would have had to go through, score the whole assessment, go back, invite the parent back in, do another meeting, do another process to happen. It's more efficient on their time, it's more accurate, so far from what we've seen. So we would like to move forward with another, with about $5,000 more dollars in that budget line item to move forward to full implementation across our building and districts with that piece. Specialized staff training account. This, on August 17, 2015, the board adopted the physical use of restraint and seclusion policy, which requires us, which requires us to train our staff in non-crisis violent intervention, or, which is called the Crisis Prevention Institute, CPI. You've heard the term before. That's a requirement of that we have to train all key personnel, and all personnel who aren't trained are not allowed to physically intervene with students. So that's been happening. There's a cost to that. And that cost roughly comes between recertifying the instructors that we have, we have about 16 instructors across the district, to recertify them, and to order supplies, there's a yearly cost to that. So that's why I asked for the increase in that budget. I'll go into more detail, I have a question from, from Board Member Schneider about that, and I'll go into some more detail about that when I get farther into my presentation. Out-of-district placements, just to mention, this year, we have decreased our projection from 42 to about 38 students in this current year, 1617. Overall, out-of-district costs are projected to be level funded. That's overall. When I say that, the costs are identified in many line items, as you'd see, they are in, they are in in-district, they are in public schools in New Hampshire, they are in out-of schools in New Hampshire, they are in New Hampshire, they are in schools outside of the state. So in those three lines, if you give the overall costs of those in all those line items, it is level funded for this year. Again, there's some projection in there. I'm predicting who is going to be severely disabled next year and needs to be placed out of district. And there are some pieces that I know some kids will stay, there's others. We do our best to bring them back into New Hampshire, and again, I'll dig more into that with some questions from Board Member Schneider later. But we do our best to bring them back, going with least restrictive environment, get them closest to home in the least restrictive environment. So you will see, if you, when you went through my budget, you will see there was probably a decrease in some out-of-state costs and some increase in state costs because there was some students that we tried to move back into our state. Let's see, the board will also see that we have some, we had some movements in the, as I said, in the 10 accounts, the 20 accounts, in the 30 accounts. And those are the elementaries or 10s, middle, 20, 30, high school, those counts move. And as we, as some students get older, the money moves with them and it moves up in counts. But overall, I tried to stay within a level funded budget for that, that point this year. There is often offered balance trying to keep students in district and cost of out-of-district placements. Again, I mentioned this last year, but I think it's important to re-mention, and I credit Chairman Ortega for pointing this out to me, too, that there is this misnomer out there sometimes that, that when we're providing FAP and we're doing our best to keep kids in school, that's not always a less expensive alternative. Sometimes we have to bring in a school psychologist, an outside counselor, a speech therapist, visual therapist, occupational therapist, speech therapist. Some of these students have severe need and need severe therapy. And there's a cost to that. We don't, there's not a high enough cost to hire full-time people, so we contract out to Seresc often, or other agencies like Boothby or Constellations. And they come in, they provide services. That does not come expensively. So there's sometimes with some of our kids that are in district, can be a very expensive cost to that line item, too. I understand that. Finally, I'd like to mention something that is not really highlighted in my budget this year, however, I've been here multiple times to talk about, and that is the movement of preschool to all three of our elementary schools and completing our process of moving 1.5 teachers over to Thornton's Ferry Elementary School. I think it would be wonderful to have a community-based school that has a community-based preschool, and we have students coming in from three right through till the end of fourth grade in all three of our lower elementary schools. And I think what you will find right now currently at MES, we have two full-time and two half-time teachers. The goal and the plan, if it goes through in the budget, is to move 1.5 teachers along with their kind of things they have and furniture and the parish cares along within those programs, and move them over to Thornton's Ferry Elementary School. So it would give us, in the end, in the 1617 budget proposed, it would give us 1.5 integrated preschool classrooms at all three elementary schools, in the addition to, we have a program at, our only specialized preschool program is really, that is solely preschool, is the one at Reed's Ferry Elementary School, which are multi-disabled people, which is half a day. So it gives you at Reed's Ferry to understand this, two full-time teachers, but understand one of those programs is based on multi-disabled children that are not integrated, that is a separate, that is a separate program. So it basically is an equal balance of 1.5 integrated, 60% students are typical developing students, and the 40% are special ed students at all three elementary schools. And again, we've offered this for 20 years in district, and it's kept evolving, and I hope that it continues to evolve into this budget. As we know, so as we know, this is best practice, it meets FAP, and again, I'll go back to least restrictive environment, closest to my home school. So if I live in the Thornton's Ferry District and I have a disabled three-year-old, closest to my school would be Thornton's Ferry. So I'll go back to that piece and just mention that. So that's what we're trying to, always reach towards FAP. Now I'll go on to ask, answer a couple of questions. Vice Chair Barnes, you asked a question to me around, around charter schools and where are we currently spending in those accounts? And I have those figures. So I will read the account number, and then I will, I'll go through and just have a little chart prepared, and I'll kind of read that to you. And if I could have handled this out, but I think it's just, there's only three items. So 100, 1207, 4181, 1406, that is special ed paraprofessional salary charter school. And the amount budgeted this year was roughly $25,000. Year-to-date, we have spent $5,011 of that, of that point. We have, we have a parareader in a charter school, and that is to this date what has happened. And the next line is 102163, 418, 323.06. That is special ed OT support charter schools. So it's basically, that is our, that is our special supports that we would need in speech supports in the charter school. So far, we have budgeted $50,000 for that. That's probably the line item with the most flux into it right now. So far, we have spent about $4,500 in that account so far. But that's one that I would caution on a given day. That could be a move-in, that could be a call. We have, and I'll talk a little more about that in a second, why, so that could be fluctuate. The next one is 102722.41.8516.06. And that is our transportation for charter school line item. And we has budgeted $35,000, $35,100 for that. And we have spent $44.85 in that account so far. So that would be where we have, what's difficult here is I have low numbers, and I don't want to breach too much confidentiality in that. I would just say that there's been an op by a family to transport their own child this year. And however the child does qualify for this, so do I have to provide and have it available? Yes, I do. So, and that's kind of what it is. We have had, which is interesting, I'll talk about charter schools for a second because we've had, I'll reference it again in, in Board Member Schneider's questions he asked, too. But this is interesting, this year, we've had five, six, five or six already assessments that we've done on students who are attending charter schools in our area. So it's interesting to watch a trend here, that I can't say over the first couple of years this law was in place, that we did many assessments. There was more kids that were in our building, moved out and went out, and went out and moved from our, from our district to the charter school. Now we're having kids who've never attended really our charter, our buildings, and are starting to ask to be assessed. So it's kind of a different, and if they're a Merrimack resident, we need to assess them. So that's kind of what is, so wait and see on that one where that goes for the year. It's too early to tell. So then I have a few questions from Board Member Schneider that I'll read the question, I'll go through and answer as many as I, as best as I can, and feel free if it's, if I'm not clear to ask for more clarification. Vice Chair Barnes, did I answer your question? Okay. Thank you. Okay. General, general question across, this one was about, like, across the entire budget. Has a reduction in overall student population in the district attributed to any head count reductions in overall? And if not, do you anticipate any that could occur coming year? Or has special ed population remained rather consistent? As I said, from 2012-13 till now, we've gone from 17.9 to 16.9 to 17.2 to 17.5. We're kind of, we've stayed right within that realm with that.
Yeah, and you answered that with your introductory comments, so that was great.
It's where we are. Do I hope that in the future with all of Dr. McLaughlin, myself, and the teams in each building, our universal teams, the efforts we're making around RTI, do I hope, to answer the party question, that we see some, in the future, some continual steady decline? And hopefully somewhere along the way, less services are provided at the higher levels because we've done so much early intervention with our preschool? Do I hope that to happen? Yes. Can I project it will? I don't know. On that one. So, and then we asked about, I will, on page one, do I, would you like me to read all the line items or am I okay with just?
No, I mean, for that one there, you answered it because it was the same question that Board Member Barnes had, so.
Okay, I'll go through. The next one is tutoring salaries for elementary, page three, and it's 101290, 418122.10. And it's on page three of my budget. And the question was, in 2014-15, expanded amount of huge, is huge compared to the budget and amount Y? And are we expected to give the current budget amounts for 1617? So what happens in this one is, it's based on student need. In that current year, we have some students, unfortunately, that had accidents, that were sick, that were hospitalized for long periods of time. It's kind of, that is one of those ones where in that year, a couple sad situations that occurred and unfortunate things happened to families, that that's why we had a large increase in that year. What happens with those accounts, sometimes I look to the middle, if I overspend in one area, I look to the middle and high, and I try to balance. And I say, and I work with Matt a lot on this to say, okay, what are, where are these figures when we're doing our budget? Like, do we stay where we are? And we stay within that kind of pot of money between the three, elementary, middle, and high, when it comes to those, and we've been able to balance those out. So the next one's page four. Again, tutoring high school, expected amount for both items, significantly below what was budgeted. It's the same answer, really. It's, we budget those out. It's sometimes that we, we do our best to try to stay within that. Some years, we don't need to offer a lot of budgeting, a lot of tutoring, some years we do. Under IDEA and special ed, if a child's out for 10 days, for 10 days consecutively, we have to offer 10 hours of tutoring. And that's what we have to offer basically on that. For a student who's a regular ed student or a student on a 504, that would be after 10 days, five hours. So we manage both those accounts out of our building. It's based on student needs, students who are absent, students who are, and again, why they fluctuate, we've been seeing, again, in the world, that I'll talk a little more about later, in the world of mental health, we've been seeing some more hospitalizations, some more long-term care, long-term things. And what happens if a child is hospitalized, for example, at New Hampshire Hospital, they'll call us, say, we've had a child of yours for five days, when can we start tutoring? And we'll, and we'll arrange that with them. We'll contact the high school, send work, and we'll do that piece, or the middle or the elementary. And that's kind of what happens in those accounts. Next one is page five, 102213428240-06. Specialized staff training, special services. So increase in 10K for $10,000 for mandatory CPI training. And Board Member Schneider asked me, can you explain why? This is new and whether it's something that is a new run rate in the training criteria. So where it is, it's increased, as I said, with the passage of our, of our restraint policy, or our permission to restrain and seclude, that basically authorize, it only authorizes, the line in the, the line in that policy says that staff authorized to use, utilize restraint will be trained in nonviolent crisis intervention programs, CPI, or other equivalent determined by the superintendent of schools that does need. A team approach should be used as, when possible, in situations that involve restraint. Untrained staff is prohibited from utilizing restraint and is limited to physical intervention by using minimal amount of physical contact with student, protect the student to ensure the safety of others. So what that says is, try to train most of your staff and work hard at doing that. And we have, last year, again, there was a question, I think by Chairman Ortega, who talked about, how am I tracking this? What are we doing? So we've made arrangements with CPI, and every time we recertify someone or we retrain them, it goes into a database. And we keep that rolling database. And I actually polled today and looked, looked at how many hours each of our trainers have done, when they're up for recertification. I'm able to go on and communicate with them, be able to stay on top of this. It's expensive. It's, it's, it's over $2,600 to recertify someone every three years in a four-day training. So we have 16 of those currently on there. So next year projected, why $10,000? Because I have three people that are coming up that are instructors that need to be recertified. I'll work with them and put them through that process, and then plus supplies. There's a book for every time we recertify a staff, either a refresher or a recertification. There's a book that goes through that, it's about $7.50 apiece. So we have about, we have almost 400 staff that are currently in process of training right now. So within those 400 people, times $7, there's a cost to that, to continue that annually. So that's kind of where the budgeting line item came from. It's an estimate. I don't have enough practice yet to know, will that be enough? We'll find that in the coming years, but it is a piece that needs to be done. Page number six, 10214941832310. Related Service Elementary. Related Service Middle. You state the amounts our related services needs are case-to-case, our case-to-case previously spent amount is higher, and the other is lower. Is this due to the moving of elementary to middle? And is it something that will fluctuate from year to year? The answer to that is yes. And I talked about kind of, a little bit, I've talked about giving the example of this. I spoke a little bit earlier about applied behavior analysis and board-certified behavior analysis. So BCBA is a person, ABA is kind of the thing they do. And the BCBAs, we started off with, I'll mention her name, Jerianne Anassis went through the program, and she is our preschool teacher, and Jerianne's come and spoke to the board before, and she was our first BCBA in district. Then we had to put a program, and there was a partnership classroom between Constellations, BCBA, and our teacher at Rachel Schneider at Thornton's Ferry, put that in place. Then we've gone on to train, and we're in the process of training Sandy Mueller, who's a multi-special, multi-disabled teacher at the upper L. And then we brought in to the middle school this year another partnership classroom. So we're kind of, it's growing and getting to the high school level within two years. So it's going to fluctuate. These services continue to fluctuate. Students have a lot of needs at the younger level. I mean, for an example, will these services continue? Yes, we have, we have 11 or 12 students who are on the autism spectrum identified, moving from preschool into first grade, then another large majority moving in from kindergarten to first grade this year. So is that growing population of related services within our districts growing? Yeah, it is. But it's also, what's growing is early intervention and more services. So again, do I hope on the other end? Yes. Have we seen it yet? No. But it does fluctuate based on But it does fluctuate based on student needs and who those students are. And some students have severe needs and those ones that carry those multiple services do get older and grow into programs and do it. And then eventually, we hope we have them college and career ready or we have them, we have, they, they age out of twenty-one and we have some kind of services provided for them. Page number eight, one hundred, two, one, nine, zero, four, one, eight, three, two, four, point, oh, six. Specialist and tutors contracted service, special services. You state, you can see why a three percent increase in district employees impairs in the budget for the Mesa contract. But for this item, it appears it's Suresk contracted services. How's a three percent increase relate to a contracted service? Or is it three percent constant amount? It, it, basically what's happening is on this one, is that Matt and I each year go through and look at our contracts with Suresk and look at our contracts with other certifiers. And we negotiate like anything else about what is, what is, what is a reasonable rate to increase? Because some of these employees have been with us for thirty years and they worked with Suresk. And they really aren't the Merrimack district employees, however, they're part of our community and they've been as dedicated as anyone to our children and our, in our community. So we constantly look at them too. We look at the rate, do we take into account what was given to the, to the two associations? Yes, we do, of course, because it wouldn't be right to give them a nice big old five percent increase and say to the associations, well, you get three this year. It's not that. So we do take into account, we talk to each other, we, we, we negotiate with them. Some years it's less, some years it's, it's the same. And this year it just happens to be three percent.
Right. And it, I, I, it's good to understand that because when you negotiate a contract like Mesa and you do percent, you don't always think about the impact it would have to people to fall outside of it and how maybe use it as a guidepost when you look. So it's good to understand that relationship and, and your explanation really helped to clarify what I was looking for, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Page ten, one hundred, two, seven, two, two, four, one, eight, five, one, four, point, two, zero. Transfer, it's, it's a question on extending your transportation, middle school and high school. Again, I'll give the other count, one hundred, two, seven, two, four, one, eight, five, one, four, three, oh. And the question is, in forty fifteen, expanded amount is very low. Is this just an anomaly? And no, it's not an anomaly. It's based on, again, fluctuation when kids move up, when they move down. Overall transportation, we, it's kind of the same thing I talked about with tutoring. We look at the three accounts, we say, okay, here's what we need to happen within, within the school year, based on our current enrollment, which I'm projecting next year, who will need a ride to school, based on their special needs that will be decided in an IAP meeting. So I'm projecting a little bit here, but based on what we currently have in projection, yes, it's how we do it. Some years it happens that students end up, you know, these costs, these costs move into different places because they may not, they could be so severe of a disability that they move out, they could transfer to another district. There's a lot of anomalies that happen within that. So within this year, within this year budget that you highlighted, yes, it was lower. But is it, could it be higher this year in this current budget? Yes, it could.
Yeah, it's, what I, I, I understand that you have to sort of budget for what it could be, you know, and, and if we underspend it, it's great because we return it. I, I guess what I'd look for is, in a lot of these cases, because we've talked about this in a few others, if we see a trend over multi-years where it's down lower, we may want to consider maybe we make a little more accurate budgeting or something like that. Just, but, but you need history to be able to support that.
And it's based on not all, and I mentioned our charter schools, if they're eligible for, for, for this, sometimes within the team, the parent chooses to transport. And that can, that's, and, and that's a team decision on that point right there. If that, the, the IP can be opened at any time and changed at any time. So if that opens up and the team's determined that you are eligible for this, although you've received the service, I have to have that, that budgeted amount somewhere. So it's based on student needs and it's based on current, what's currently happening. It's kind of a balance between both.
Right. And that's why sometimes you have to budget for the worst case, you know, so you don't fall short at the end, right? So I've seen that in a lot, in, in your particular budget, you know, especially when you look, and I'll stop you a little bit because a lot of my questions to the end talk about the varying in-state, out-of-state, going from schools. Because you've got tables in there talking about movements of students and it's hard to track. I mean, what you try to do is, is, you said that our, our out-of-district placements generally are about flat overall. But when you, when you try to look at the minutia, it's hard to figure out, is it really flat in the overall summary? So I don't expect you to go through every little nuance and stuff, but just talk generally about, you know, what the, what the progression is, how many you see come, come in, you know, that, that we've, things that we've taught within the district, now maybe are out of district, things are maybe coming back in, just general trending. Because you're, you're, and I apologize for not getting back to your question earlier today. You, you don't want to expose confidentiality of students as part of this discussion. So I don't want you to go down that road based on my questions.
And that's a difficult thing without giving examples and, and saying, well, here's one example of a child that did this. It would identify the child. So it's very, that's what sometimes within this budget, it's hard to say, well, yeah, it, it does happen. We have the multiple factors you just spoke of, kids who move in, kids who move out, kids who integrate back into the schools, kids who, you know, and it's funny, I had the conversation with Matt, Matt Chevanel today, when we're talking. And, and between the time we left last, for the winter break to the time I returned today, we're looking at three different placements. And that's a typical two-week span that can happen within, within Sherry Goldberg's life and what she does as the out-of-district coordinator. It's the, she, and Marge and I had a very similar conversation about monitoring email. We may walk away, but we have to monitor email because we have kids in placement. And those are things that kind of in this world of special ed where, where it fluctuates and these are our most severe students. These, these students have been vetted through the process and gone through every resource we have within the district, then a determination was made, we need to go outside. So they are, they are the students that really need more support. They need more than we currently could offer within our building or we would have. And I think that's kind of what, what the piece is. So there's going to be some fluctuation and trying to find out what's the, the right placement to meet FAP for these children. And it's, sometimes it's more than one try. I hate to say, it is. And that's sometimes we place someone for a few months somewhere, it started very well, but they need a more restrictive or more therapeutic environment and we move to those placements. So that happens often within the process. So, and again, on page eleven, the same type of question around transportation in middle school, and, and I answered that really. It's, it's within those same transportation costs, we move back and forth. I'll, I'll move to page, on page fifteen, one hundred, one, two, zero, zero, eight, five, six, three, one, zero. Specialized tuition non-public versus elementary. And this alludes to, Board Member Schneider alludes to what you said about placement. And this is, the amount of budget less than the previous year, but even this seems to be new objects for placements. There are, there is no carryover placements from the current elementary students. Did they all move to the middle school? And, and, and in that question, for this particular year? No, they, 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 they didn't. Some moved to programs from an, from an out-of-state to an in-state program. And some did move to the middle. There's both is the answer. And, and, you know, and, and that's kind of the answer. So it's both scenarios happening.
That's what, that's why some of my questions surrounded that and is, when you look at them in a whole, after you submitted them, you see all the moving parts. It's like the, you know, tentacles of all these things mixing together, so.
Yeah, it is, it, it is. And then.
Probably just the one on page twenty-one, the one about the, the budgeting around ACs and stuff. Because all the other questions were sort of.
Thank you.
Around that area.
Thank you. Page twenty-one, one hundred, two, three, two, nine, eight, seven, three, oh, oh, six. Special additional equipment. If we look back the previous, the previous budgets, how did the AC, AC request align with other items, iPads, et cetera? And are there more of these other items this year than in the past? Appears to be twenty K outside of the AC budget. And can you share the history of the AC additions that have already been done? So I shared really the history of the ACs, where they were and it reads very, and how we're trying to move them to both Thornton's and to the upper elementary school. So I think the remaining twenty thousand dollars that, that's in there, I think, is for purchase of iPads, computers and other technologies to meet students' identified needs. Nancy Rose talked a lot about this. And what's happening right now is some of our technologies are becoming obsolete, unfortunately. Even those early iPads that we bought, the iPod Ones right now, they don't have a camera, they don't have a good microphone, and they don't run things, software such as Dream Reader, which is a program that we use that, that will actually read information. You can take text, photograph it and read it for students who have difficulty with reading, things like that. A lot of our apps now, it won't upgrade, it won't upgrade to new iOS. So we are right now, basically iPad three to the iPad Airs is what we are kind of moving towards. We have a lot of twos that we bought. So it's kind of, what are we doing there? So slowly, I'm trying to say where needed, based on student needs, because not all student, not all students need a brand-new iPad Air in their, in their hands. Some can function very well for the technology they need if it's just a touch chart, things like that, in an older iPad. So we're using all of it still, but some of the kids who need a little more advanced technology, our high school students especially, that are using just, I can credit them in the past year, they've just using so much more technology to really help them integrate into the classroom. And we're seeing it, we're constantly getting requests about new apps that will help them do things. And, and I contract with, with a woman by the name of Jen Loten, who, I don't know if Jen's come to the table, but Jen is a former director of technology in, in Manchester and now is a technology coordinator in Pinkerton. But we contract with her a few days a year and she'll come in and work with our teams on how to, how to access and use new apps. And sometimes we'll bring her in an individual basis and consult with the team on, we have a child that's just not accessing education real well. What technologies can we use for that child? And we're using her in some ways and, and some of that, that twenty thousand dollars are suggestions she makes in purchases. So we've done some of that. So it's continuing to put technology in the hands that's useful and that can enhance what they're currently doing to full, to more fully integrate students with their typical peers. So it's, again, always pushing towards FAP and technology has been a wonderful tool to make great gains over the past year, four years to get us there. So with that, is there any other questions that I can answer for Board Members?
How could there be? I would, I would just like to thank you for, no, 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 no. This is a, I, I piled a whole boatload of questions on you when I was reviewing this. I don't know what I was eating for breakfast that day, but, but I really appreciate the, the detail that you went through because it's, it helps not only to give me context, but also people listening and, and getting a little more insight into the, the special ed budget because it is very intricate and, and very involved. So thanks a lot, I appreciate it.
And, and one of my closing comments on this two pieces that, is that it takes, I, I don't want to take sole credit for this either, it takes a team. The team in my special services office and the team, and Matt's team. I think that we talk constantly about the budget, like out-of-district is in multiple accounts. You know, it's not only in those accounts, it's in transportation, it's in out-of-district, it's in all the in-district and out-of-district and, and pieces like that. It's multiple players involved. And then when you get into assessments, it's multiple psychologists involved in pieces like that. So we're talking, many councils have to go across the broad base to get this kind of, are we meeting the students' needs in FAP? Are we being, are we being responsible to what the budget says and, and where are we? And we have to constantly check throughout the year to make sure, okay, we're good. Because as I said, as of my last week, we have three different placements facing us this week. And are they within what we said before? And that's the hard part of doing it, but I credit those teams working together too.
Ms. Gualyumi.
I'm wondering if we can just take a moment to come back to the idea of the, or the, the special ed program rolling it out to the other elementary schools. So to Thornton's Semester Coles. I wonder if you could just take a minute, you spoke about it at the beginning, I think in your introductory remarks, and just kind of take a minute to walk through what those benefits are to the special ed students, the communities, the families and so on and so forth.
Certainly. And I can speak as a, as a parent and as a special ed director about, about, would have loved an opportunity to have my children in school earlier and have the opportunity to, to learn where the nurse's office is and learn who the principal is and learn where the playground is. And learn all the things about school that we put on a six-year-old day one to start, or a five-year-old to start kindergarten or first grade. And it's kind of nice to have a slow blend into that and a, just as a humanistic side of it, never mind educational, let's humanistic side of it, learn all those soft skills that we all need in life to be able to accommodate and integrate with our peers. And that's kind of what it is. And now, to go to a special ed side of it, the reason the law is there and it, and it talks about the sixty, forty split is modeling. And, and we all know this, that we learn from our peers very well and, and, and three-year-olds are no different. When, when you put them with peers who are typically developing and can, can start to formulate sentences and letters and, and, and do the life functions of toiling and do all the life functions of playing and interacting and taking turns and doing all those things. When you see that firsthand as a three-year-old, you learn it from others. So that benefit of just the pure modeling piece is, is there. Then we get into, okay, now what if you have speech delays, OT, OT delays? Those services be able to provide it in the public school with good models for children to see how to do it. Also, we have time on our hands because here's, it's kind of a bonus in a way. We can start kids early, they're with us, we can use our service providers who are already in the buildings, who are there. Parents don't have to bring kids to a center, don't have to bring kids things, they're there, they're integrated throughout the day. We can do real-life application of how it should look in school, teach them how to school with our occupations, our speech veritists, our BCBAs doing those pieces in the benefits in school. I think that the benefit of just early literacy skills and exposure to literature, there's a ton of research out there about that, about being read to and about being exposed to multiple versions of words and understanding song and understanding all those things that a preschool teacher will do with them, a certified special ed preschool teacher. So those benefits all, all are there. It allows now from a, from an educator's perspective to flip the coin, from a principal, from a, from a teacher, from a nurse, from, from a, from a school counselor, from a behavior specialist, to learn the students at an earlier age. Learn the family, form relationships with that family. So on days when it doesn't go well, or you have that discourse, you have a relationship with that family. Those are all huge pieces to, to why preschool and why in my community and why next to me as much as you can.
All set? And I would say, you made an excellent case. I, I just want to clarify, there's, in order to accomplish this, there's no net increase to your budget.
Yes.
The Thornton's Ferry budget has a requirement to put a playground for about thirty thousand dollars in their budget in order to make this happen. So for the thirty thousand dollars, right, we can accomplish what you much more eloquently said than I possibly could. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Fabrizio, thank you for a very, very thorough presentation.
Thank you.
He was the trustee, we should see the trustee, the trust funds tonight.
They got off easy.
They totally got off.
That takes us to item number eight, Planning Board Recommendations Regarding the School District's Two Thousand Sixteen, Two Thousand Twenty-Two Capital Improvement Plan, or what we call the CIP. My name is here with Mr. Chevanel's. And I really only attended the presentation to offer color commentary or clarity on the board's position in, or positions in particular as it related to the items that we marked as urgent, both the middle school roof, for the reasons we deemed that urgent, as well as the high school track and the fact that we can no longer find a vendor who's willing to repair it. It's beyond repairable. Nobody wants to have their name associated with it. Mr. Chevanel did a fantastic job walking them through the capital improvement plan and the rationale and the need behind each of the projects and, for that matter, the sequencing that existed. In your packet, you'll find what was actually somewhat surprising to us, that under discussion where, where we had spent a lot of time looking at the year-over-year impacts of these capital improvement projects and where to do things. There were a couple that they pulled forward in their recommendation, and it is that a recommendation from the planning board. That the asbestos removal project be pulled forward. The, the feeling was they just. Um, the, the feeling was they just want it done. Um, and, uh, the feeling was that the, uh, high school bleachers as well would be something that would be, uh, better to have done, uh, sooner than later. Um, and there was a strong recommendation, uh, from the board as well, that when we do paving projects, uh, that we consider sidewalks and look for federal, uh, matching funds when, when we consider, uh, those projects. So, um, I don't know, Mr. Chevanelle, if you wanna add some?
No, I think, I think you've pretty much, uh, captured the essence of the entire meeting and there were these, uh, adjustments done after we had, uh, left, so you said it all.
Mr. Schneider.
So while I certainly can understand their rationale, um, I think we all have talked at this table about the har- harsh realities of the, the budget this year and the, the things that showed up in the CIP for this year that were not planned going into this year, and in particular, the roof and, and the track and the, as well as the, the, the heat, heat exchange or the heat wheel. I mean, I, I, I can't say I disagree with what they're asking, but it's, it's a matter of dollars and cents and, and are we, that's why we've asked so many questions about if we wait, what's the impact? Now, I know we didn't talk about the asbestos removal, but I know that based on our conversations in years past, you would carry it earlier if there was an exposure of asbestos and I'm assuming the risk is still low based on what you've shared in the past. And as far as the bleachers are concerned, we talked about, there isn't a, there isn't a, um, a, a danger to there, it's just that they're not compliant. And as long as we have the existing complaint, we could delay for a period. So, I mean, I, I, while I understand the reason, I, I don't, I don't think I could support an action of moving any of these things earlier in our CIP, so.
Yeah, the, the two projects that got moved, um, total roughly another $570,000 into the 16-17 year. I do believe that while some recognized that the bottom line total that they're seeing on the capital improvement plan is not the actual yearly total. If you take the, the, um, centralized office, uh, project, um, that's in there for just over 1.9 million, we've talked about bonding that. And I believe it was, um, Councilor Mahon, um, asked the question, how many years were you looking at and made the statement, well, the first year's half a year's interest and then, you know, your largest payment is then in the second year. I think what they were looking at was the fact that 17-18, I don't wanna say some, all, maybe none, um, but I, I do think that, that it was referred to that 17-18 was high as a year, um, where, uh, shifting some of that money might balance it out. And so I don't know how much, um, uh, analysis went into the balancing of taxpayer concerns and spikes year-over-year.
It's a side effect of not, of not calling out the, the bonded items from the, the actual cash that you'd wanna spend in that year.
It was asked after we had concluded presentation and they began deliberating. We answered it from the pews, but I don't know how many, uh, planning board members internalized that in their requests. I'll go that far. And no further.
The town, the town planning board really is, uh, charged with looking at all the, the capital projects and the need as, as they see them given the information at hand. They're not really a budgetary board, uh, nor they are a decision-making board for this body here. They're there to give you your recommendations and to take everything and then to blend it with the town, the police, the fire, everything like that, and put together cohesive master plan for the entire town, which includes the school district, which is a very large part of the town. And so that, that's their main objective. So they're not there to dictate to you, you should put this in your budget or not. They're there to give you their recommendations based upon what they see.
Yes, Vice Chair Barne.
Not for this budget, obviously, um, we've got enough going on. But based on the suggestion regarding, uh, the sidewalks, can we get a projection of the estimate as we do these paving projects, how much sidewalk additions would be to, uh, the projects? And I would absolutely, if we do decide to get those numbers, make sure they're line itemed out, so you can look at the cost of paving with and without that, uh, suggested expenditure.
Superintendent.
And I would just say that the reason that we had not put that in the capital improvement plan is our estimation initially was that it was not gonna be 100,000. So the rule of thumb is 100,000 or over. So that's why we didn't have that appear. So, um, I think for the next go, given the fact that you've separated out paving around the high school from Agaro Drive, that when we look at Agaro Drive, we'll have two parts. And one would probably be for the operating budget and one for the CIP. But we put them together. But it didn't make sense when we were initially, you know, doing the initial sip for you back in the summer.
Makes sense. And I guess the question is if you did lump it together, but if it was the same project under the same agreement, you know, how much more would it be? So I guess that's, you know, knowing what it would be, if, if it's marginally, you know, just a little bit more, do we start integrating that to the CIP that way? So knowing what the difference is and then being able to, uh, project and strategize accordingly.
Yeah. And, and the, and the recommendation, uh, that came, uh, from the planning board was, uh, that there are a number of, uh, federal and state programs that had recently, um, if you'll recall from past Safe Roots to School, um, updates had been under review, the monies had sort of been held, um, they're opening those funds up and they've, uh, rejiggered how that money is available. And so, um, there were good percentages, if you're including sidewalk, uh, of the entire paving project, right, that could be covered by some of these, uh, grants, right? And the recommendation was investigate those as part of the total cost, cause it could probably, simply including a sidewalk, might actually reduce the overall paving cost too. So one is knowing the incremental cost, but also what additional savings we might get. Yes, Mr. Marcus.
I had a question and I was hoping someone could briefly explain it to me. Why is it that for 16-17, it's a two-and-a-half million dollar budget for the CIP? And then in 17-18, it's 3.9 million? So why do we have so many projects compressed in the year 17-18? Why aren't we dispersing some of that into 2016-17 to offset the cost?
That's a great question and, and it's worth explaining. I did it a little bit quickly because many of us have, have, uh, been more intimately involved with this and for much, much longer than you. So, great question. You'll notice that one of the projects there, um, in the middle of the page is a consolidated special services and SAU office. So replacing the green and the blue buildings that, um, the superintendent and Mr. Fabrizio and, and the team here, uh, both work in. That project, because it's a building that's going to last for hopefully 50 to 100, uh, years, I'm, I'm gonna go out on a limb, um, is the sort of thing that we wouldn't make a one-time payment for and that we would look to bond, uh, essentially take out a loan for. And so the cost will drop, the first year we pay half a year's interest, um, and then, uh, the amount varies year-over-year, principal and interest. But it's roughly a couple hundred grand, I think, over a 20-year bond.
Correct.
And so that's why that number and subsequent years would also go down.
All right, thank you.
Is that helpful?
Yes, very.
Sure. Excellent. Mr. Schneider.
And I think based on our previous discussions, that interest payment for that year would be somewhere on the order of 50,000, 30 to 50,000 dollars.
Yeah.
So instead of 1.9 million, you have 50,000 dollars as the cost for that year that we would see, should that occur, you know, obviously.
Right. So that year's just over 2 million.
Right, exactly. So it's actually less than this year's is.
Correct. Excellent. Any other comments, questions? But I, I would simply reiterate, uh, Mr. Chevanelle, um, did a fantastic job, I, I think presented for close to an hour. So thank you for that. And that takes us now to item number nine, uh, School Board Budget Hearing Schedule. In your packet, uh, you will see, uh, the schedule of meetings, uh, for, uh, the budget hearings, uh, that we have, uh, already conducted as well as those that are upcoming. Um, I'd like to announce, uh, at least those, uh, for the school, uh, board. Um, and I can give some broad dates, uh, for the budget committee, um, for folks' benefits. And I'm sure the budget committee will, um, also, uh, reiterate their schedules as they begin to meet. Um, so we met already on food service and maintenance and tonight we heard from Technology, Library, Media Services and Special Services. This Thursday, uh, January 7th, in the Mastrocola Elementary School APR at 7:00 PM, uh, we will have, uh, School Board Budget Hearing on the three elementary schools, the upper elementary school and Merrimack High School. And so this meeting, uh, will be the only one, um, that the school board will do that is not here at, uh, Town Hall. So it's Mastrocola Elementary School APR. On Tuesday, January 12th, uh, we will have a budget hearing, uh, the last of our, uh, departmental budget hearings, um, on Tuesday, June 12th, 7:00 PM here. Uh, and we'll cover the middle school, district-wide, and discuss possible warrant articles. And so certainly, uh, the topic we discussed tonight of a proposed warrant article regarding, uh, management fees and trust funds will be taken up, uh, then. Our meeting on January 18th, uh, will, uh, include as a, an agenda item, approval of the 2016-2017 budget. So it's at this meeting, um, where we will actually move either individual line items and the entire budget, uh, forward. The budget committee, um, is beginning, uh, their liaison meetings now. Assignments, I, I think went out, uh, this afternoon. Um, and they will be meeting with department heads between now and January 22nd. And their first, uh, meeting to review department budgets is January 19th. That's a Tuesday evening, uh, the day after we move our budget, uh, forward. And all of their meetings will be held in the, uh, high school cafeteria. In terms of, um, important dates, uh, moving, uh, forward in the schedule, uh, the school district deliberative session is March 8th, Tuesday, March 8th. The snow date for the deliberative session is Thursday, March 10th. And we've had to coordinate this with, uh, the town side, uh, because of the way that schedules have fallen this year. Um, and voting, uh, will take place on April 12th, which is also a Tuesday. The last day for petitioned bond articles is February 5th. And the last day for petitioned warrant articles is February 9th. Hopefully, that's helpful to folks. Any questions, comment? And that will take us to item number 10, Report on the 2014-2015 Annual Measurable Academic Objectives, or AMAOs, for Limited English Proficient, otherwise called LEP students. Dr. Mark McLaughlin.
Thank you. So in your packets, uh, tonight, you have a copy of a letter that Commissioner Barry sent to Superintendent Chaffrey. Um, and my purpose tonight is just to, to provide context for the letter and, uh, help you to understand, um, it's, what it means. And so I'll start by saying that, um, you, you probably know that, uh, the, there's a federal requirement, uh, every year to test, uh, our limited English proficient students or our English language learner students, um, to ensure that they are receiving the proper services. And, um, so that test is administered every, uh, every winter between February and March and it's called the Access Test for Limited English Proficient Learners. Um, so all our students who are, uh, registered limited English proficient students take that test. And then every fall, we receive, uh, what Chairman Ortega described as the AMAO Accountability Report. And again, that's the Annual Measurable Achievement Objectives Report. This is a report that comes in three categories, uh, and each category has a separate target. So the first category is Annual Progress of English Learning, that's AMAO1. And what that means is it's essentially, uh, paints the picture of students making some progress at all. So, so whatever that progress is, as long as, you know, it's a little bit of progress and there's a, there's a generous benchmark there, then you meet that objective. And we have met that objective. The second objective, AMAO2, is achievement of proficiency in English learning. So the first objective is progress of some kind. Kids can demonstrate, students can demonstrate progress of some kind. The second is that, English language learning, but at a proficiency level. And that proficiency target changes each year. And this past year, it jumped about five points from the previous year. That Merrimack did not meet. And that is the purpose of the letter from Commissioner Barry to the superintendent that, um, that you, is in your packet tonight. I'll say more about that in a minute. And then the third is progress in reading and mathematics and that, uh, we did meet. So that's to ensure that students who are limited English proficient are making adequate yearly progress, uh, in reading and mathematics and we met that as well. So, um, what I would, um, tell you is that this is the first year that we have received such a letter indicating that on one of the AMAOs, we did not meet the target. You know, as is always the case when this happens, we look for reasons and I would offer two. One is that the target percent proficient that's set by the state, um, jumped 5% from last year. This was, um, set several years ago, um, by the state in the same way that the, um, No Child Left Behind Act suggested that, not suggested, mandated that by 2014, all students taking the NECAP or any state test would be proficient. So at that time, when they, um, developed the 2014 benchmark for proficiency, they said for limited English proficient students in the year 2014-15, we wanna see, um, 27% being able to demonstrate proficiency in English language learning as different from just progress. And so that, that is just a change. It's neither here nor there, it's a change. The second fact that I would just, uh, share with you is that we've had about a 12% increase in new students, uh, requiring ELL services over last year. That's a good thing, we welcome them. And we're really working hard to, um, support them. And, um, it's a matter of fact that if you have students who are recently arrived from another country who have limited or no English, um, that very year to take a test that tests proficiency is unlikely to produce proficiency in that first year. I mean, it's just a fact. So, um, the other thing that I just pointed, I think the board knows this, but it's important to just remind, uh, in order to qualify for Title III funds, um, a town or a city has to reach a certain, um, population of student number to qualify. Merrimack is too small. So in order to qualify for funds, we've joined a cohort. We established a cohort with Clermont and Goffstown. And so we apply for Title III funds as a cohort and the population of those three communities adds up to enough to qualify for funds. And then we get those funds and then we share those funds and they support part of our, you know, programming, uh, supplies and materials and, and technology. And they support part of our, you know, programming supplies and materials and technology on occasion. Just for your information, the Claremont School District has nine limited English proficient students. Goffstown, this past year, has 14, and Merrimack is 34. So, in our cohort, that's a significant difference. And as I say, we welcome them all, and we, I, you know, would say that our three professionals, ESOL educators, do a fantastic job. The reason we are bringing this to your attention is because it's required by federal law that a letter be sent from the district to the parents of students in this program indicating that of the three annual measurable objectives, we did not meet one. It's a requirement to send that letter. That letter is, has been crafted, and it will be sent this week home. And so, we just wanted the board to be aware of this. And, you know, we state our commitment to doing what we've always done, which is to continue to support our students and to welcome them and to give them the best education we can. It's interesting that after those letters were sent out, all the Title III project managers, and I am one, received the following letter, and I'll just, from Aaron Hughes, who's the Title III Director for the State of New Hampshire. And I think you might just find it interesting. It says, "Dear Title III Project Managers, Last week, we sent out the annual AMAO letters to superintendents. We want to reconfirm our appreciation of your district's work." And this was sent to all the districts in the state, because every district in the state now receives this letter. "In some ways, sending out these letters was disheartening, for we had to report that most of our districts failed to meet AMAO 2. We understand the frustration and concern when all the hard work and effort does not directly transfer to meeting the state AMAOs. Changes to the accountability system are on the horizon with the newly authorized Every Student Succeeds Act. And in our next project managers' meeting in March, we will discuss these changes." I have since spoken to Aaron Hughes and volunteered Merrimack to be on a group that can help to create what that metric would look like, because, you know, we take our ESOL education of our students very seriously. So, you know, they've taken that under advisement, and when they formed that committee, I'm hoping that we would be able to be at the table to have some conversation about what that might look like. But in any event, I'm happy to take questions that you have. But the objective was to explain the reason for the commissioner's letter to the superintendent and to provide some context for it.
Thank you, Dr. McLaughlin. Ms. Gualyumi.
So, just to repeat, did you say that few or no other districts passed?
Correct.
All set? Okay. Vice Chair Barnes.
Honestly, that was my question before you answered it with the, do you know what percentage of schools didn't meet, and with the increase? I guess the question is, with this 5% increase you discussed, which raised the benchmark, how close were we to making the increased benchmark? Do we know?
Two points.
So, basically, we were three points over what would have been last year's benchmark. But this year's benchmark created the gap.
Correct.
Okay. That's great information. Thank you.
Since we're talking about budgets and funding, the consortium that we're in and the allocation of dollars within the consortium, is that distributed by the number of students who are qualified by programs? So, our disproportionate number gets us a higher percentage?
That's correct.
Okay. Excellent. The one pleasing thing I heard of this. And the fact that changes are coming in the standards and we're willing to step to the table. So, I guess there's much more than one thing.
Right.
Wonderful. All right. Thank you. And that takes us to item number 11. Board's Consideration of Adding Noteworthy News as a Standing Agenda Item. At our last meeting under correspondence, it was noted that a constituent, I believe, had suggested adding a standing agenda item for noteworthy news. And wanted to give the board an opportunity to discuss and decide if this is, in fact, something we want to do. Vice Chair Barnes.
So, for starters, I coined the term noteworthy news. It was just talking about happenings in the district.
I did put it in air quotes.
Yes. So, it is, it was my marketing mind coming up with a name for it, but it doesn't have to be called that. Honestly, I've thought a lot about it since it came to my attention. And I think we want to do a couple of things with it, and I think we should have it as a standing agenda item with a name that is more palatable, if you choose. Because it does sound kind of hokey, and I don't want it to be watered down. That being said, I think that there's so much information in this district that, you know, goes to parents. We used to get, when we were, when I first started on the board, I know there was more paper then, which, you know, I'm not a fan of. But they had, we had newsletters, like the ticker Times, then I would get the Thornton's Ferry version, and all these newsletters of what's going on in the schools. We don't, I haven't gotten those probably in a couple of years. I don't know if you've gotten one since you've been on the board. I think you're the last one to join, Cinda, other than the ones your kids are in, they don't count.
Yeah. And then, also, the principal, I know it reads Ferry, sends out a newsletter that I've received recently that has some of items that are going on, as well as I've seen similar items in Powers, in the Power School updates as well. Those are a couple of ways that I, I know at least I received.
Right. But as a parent, yes. And that same thing, I get my middle school, because I'm all middle school this year. Good luck to you next year, Mr. Delude. You're getting one. But that being said, I think that, you know, what's going on in Thornton's Ferry and the Upper Elementary School, which obviously are vested in there as well. But what's going on in the different buildings, you know, that are communications to parents about, you know, student successes, events, you know, just goings-on their calendar, that's great information. But I think there's also the operational ideas that, you know, I know that you have leadership meetings every week, Marge, where those takeaways, where the overriding themes, you know, where the focuses that come away from those leadership meetings. Sometimes it may be in the minutia, I know, specific items that may be, you know, worthy or not worthy of conversation, maybe not appropriate for conversation, maybe so. I know it came to my attention that the Chief of Police was at Suresk a couple of weeks ago, talking to superintendents about drugs in schools. So, that's great information for us. I think that's so relevant right now. And just having that information as a timely and fresh update, you know, every couple of weeks. It doesn't have to be, you know, I think, a running tally of what you did in two weeks, but what are the things that are really driving our district to meet its objectives and to meet our goals as a board, to address things like, you know, as I said, drugs in schools was another thing that came up a couple of weeks ago. So, you know, what's happening all the time that may not be prevalent to the community at large, maybe not even to us, because we may not be looking at those very specific things in our agenda items. But they're timely and worthy of note. And, you know, as time goes on, they may be, you know, lost in sharpness by not having them kind of reported every couple of weeks. So, that's been my idea of it.
Ms. Gualyumi.
I mean, I like the idea of a standing agenda item with, you know, just kind of the key happenings that are going on, because if we win state even, or, you know, aside from what we're doing for our objectives, it's kind of nice to just take. I see this as kind of a short and sweet, kind of a couple of things that are going on. Here's to make everybody aware of what it is, whether it's once, you know, if it's a key piece of information about graduation, or, again, accomplishments of a teacher. A teacher, for example, maybe they get some kind of recognition that I might read about it in our local, you know, the local paper or something like that. But I don't, I think it'd be nice to just bring up a couple of those key points every, you know, and have it there, so it stays top of mind on some of the great things that are happening.
Mr. Schneider.
So, this, I was sort of torn on this, only because we sometimes do it as part of comments. I mean, the superintendent will bring up some things under comments sometimes. But comments also could be comments that we have about something that happened during a meeting. So, I could see the thing there. The problem is, is that, I mean, I don't want to make us sound unimportant, but the percent of the population that actually watches this meeting and the recording is probably not significant statistically. And it begs the question as to whether this is more of a request for the district as a whole to do some sort of centralized update that occurs, maybe monthly or whatever like that. Because right now, you've all described newsletters at the school level. And we've all seen different things that there is, having kids in the schools. But when you go to the main page of the district, there's higher-level news that's occasionally there, but there's not like a newsletter. I mean, the closest thing you can get as a parent to go to the Power School updates for a particular school, but it's usually, sometimes they're general news, but a lot of times, it's focused. You know, you go to the high school, it talks about the prom and things like that, right? So, really, what I'm thinking is that, I'm on the fences of whether we put something called, you know, whatever we call it, Fred, you know, on the agenda for an update. But I would really like us to see, make something more formalized in terms of an online way that people can go and pull the data, so they don't have to watch this meeting to get, you know, the information like the, you know, a teacher that was recognized, you know, I see something we're going to talk about later as an example, or talk about calendar, you know, the calendar thing we're going to talk about and others. It'd be good to have that very quickly, very, you know, online, so people can pull it, and we make it someplace very visible for that to do, so.
Vice Chair Barnes.
Well, that being said, I agree that should be in multiple places, but I don't agree that we should throw out one. And the reason is, I think, when we look at what this board does, is we inquire, and we ask questions, and we look at the vision and the logic model and the goals of the district and the policies of the district, and how all the things that they're doing. And I think, you know, when we talk about things like leadership, you know, Marge meets with the head of every building and department heads every week. So, you're talking top of mind and very, you know, fresh and relevant information, stuff that maybe, as time goes on, if it doesn't make it into a presentation, gets lost. But that gives us a better, I think, finger on the pulse of what's really happening in the district. And it's not just for us to know. It's obviously for every taxpayer that wants to know to know. And they can, for us to ask the questions, it makes the cameras, for those who don't, you know, want to check a newsletter or check our website, makes the minutes for public documentation, and inquisition and any follow-up that's being requested will be placed there as well in the minutes. And then, of course, the supporting documentation would be on the website as well. So, I don't think that you're wrong, but I don't think it's a one-shot deal.
Can I ask a question?
No.
No, because I want to clarify.
Absolutely.
You know, from the perspective of the board, because we've noted it, right? This, this week, we've got an article on an educator who's won an award, apparently, perhaps gave away comments that are coming. But in the past, you know, we've talked about Mr. Marcus's achievement, right? We've talked about the AP Award last time around. When these achievements occur, I believe, you know, the noteworthy ones are getting to us, and that there isn't information, perhaps, that I'm lacking, and believe that the superintendent is providing us with information. If what we're saying is, there may be things within individual school newsletters that individual board members might like to receive, read, review, and might also call out as noteworthy and want to mention at a meeting under comments or some other agenda item, I think that makes good sense. If what we're saying is, we need a standing agenda item, and the superintendent, gosh darn it, you know, there's things happening, we better find them for this meeting so that they make it into the agenda, even if perhaps they wouldn't have risen to the level of relevance. And I, I'm hesitant to make more work creating news when perhaps it doesn't exist. Ms. Gualyumi.
So, I mean, the one suggestion would be under the other section, number, you know, it's number 13 today. Maybe it's comments slash, you know, district happenings or something like that, that whether there's a comment or something in the district, it's still covered in.
Just clarifies it.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'd be okay with that. Mr. Schneider. Yeah, I apologize. I wanted to make a comment, and I deferred, and then I.
Skipped right over me. I'm just so.
Ms. Gualyumi raised her hand far more vociferously. Pick me, pick me.
The concern I have, listening to Shannon's comment, is where do we draw the line of what, because you talked a lot about, you know, leadership team meetings and data that comes out. You started talking about things that I'm not sure which are noteworthy and which are just updates of things that are going on. And I'm trying to figure out, I mean, I'm assuming, maybe I'm wrong, that the noteworthy news request was things that are of interest to the general population. We want to make sure that we regularly get out there for people to hear. But there may be things from the board that we want to hear more about that happens at leadership. It's almost like two different things altogether. So, that's what I'm trying to understand, the difference between something that the voters and the residents would see as noteworthy versus what we would see as noteworthy. So, that's sort of my quandary.
Yes. Vice Chair Barnes.
And that being said, I think that that's, when you talk about noteworthy news and what's answerable to the viewers, the viewers have different stakes. Obviously, you have those that are parents, those are taxpayers, and they equally have a lot of questions. I think we're always, you know, it's adding a level of transparency, going from the nicety to the brevity of it. I mean, you really want to know how the investment's working out. And we get periodic things like, we got the Smarter Balanced Evaluation, which was great, but it's, of course, it's a snapshot of one thing that tells us how we're doing in the district. But, you know, and I think it leaves it that. It becomes a hanging chat. It's like, here's this one data point, it says one thing. But, you know, we talk about all the time how that assessment is one piece of a very big picture. How are we delivering a quality education? What are we doing to do better year over year? What are the strategies that are going into that? And that, I think, says, you know, to the parents, well, now I see where, you know, the big picture is. You know, I know about my kids' classroom efforts, but what's the big picture here? What are the areas that they're looking to develop and refine, improve? If they're good, make them great. If they're great, make them, you know, make them the example for all to live by. But are we doing enough to communicate? And I think that's, again, it's just an overriding sentiment. I don't know that we are. And it's because I think, I mean, being on the inside, and I'm not so far inside, but being on the board, are, you know, we know, we're getting fairly knowledgeable about how the district works, but I still think there are things that we don't know that might be very beneficial to know, but we won't know until it's kind of, you know, presented to us. And, you know, do I want to make news? I don't want to make news. You know, I don't want there to be, you know, noteworthy news while there's nothing really to report. This would be a perfect day for that, because we had two weeks vacation. I would hope you wouldn't have too much to report, and then you got some rest of relaxation, because midterms are coming. And I'm sure there's a lot more to be done. But to not always have that, what I would call proactive communication about how we are delivering a quality education to the students of Merrimack, and how the tax dollars that go into funding that education are being properly invested to achieve those objectives. I think that's the top of it for me.
Okay. Mr. Marcus.
My only issue, or rather, the largest issue I have with introducing it as a standing agenda item is, like Mr. Ortega said, or I can't remember if it was you or Mr. Schneider, but.
If it was intelligent, it was probably Mr. Schneider.
Then, Mr. Schneider had said that you have to draw the line somewhere. So, if we only take the larger, more substantial pieces of noteworthy news to introduce before the board, then those don't happen every other week, which means in a majority of meetings throughout the year, Mr. Ortega would have to read, is there any noteworthy news? No, there is not. And then, move on. So, I feel like introducing it as a standing agenda item would actually call out the fact that there isn't a ton of noteworthy news. But then, when there is, we can always introduce it under comments or correspondence and achieve the same effect. And that being said, I'm in favor of looking for ways to spread information around aside from these meetings, maybe using Power School or school bulletins, like you said. But I feel like introducing the standing agenda item would just call attention to those meetings when there is no noteworthy news.
Yeah. Can I?
Of course.
Help them. I don't want my question, or even this debate, to be interpreted as this not being a really well-intentioned, good idea, right? Ultimately, and this was also talked about at the last meeting, right? Board member Gualyumi. Uh, Board Member Guayumi, um, and I know for your years on the board, you've talked about having a communication plan or some sort of a review of the way that we handle communication within the district to tie things together. To me, this is one.
Yeah.
Micro dot, right, within that larger communication plan and strategy. Um, and again, a good idea, but I just worry about how does it fit into the overall. Um, I do think if someone is interested and watching our meetings, independent of noteworthy news, if they wanna know how their money's being spent, what the return is, um, you know, what a, a local preschool at Thornton's Ferry, what benefits it will have for a, a lower cost and what that means to the continuum of the education for that student. They'll see that, whether they see it in one meeting or over a series of meetings, um, they will, will certainly get that. And adding noteworthy news in a single meeting isn't gonna tie all that together either. Um, so I, I think it's the right idea, but I think it fits in the larger context of a, a broader communication review and, and plan. That's my take.
And, and that's a fair enough take, honestly. My biggest thing is I wanna make sure that as much information that maybe doesn't get to this table, because it just gets, you know, there's so much going on that by the time, you know, two months goes by, well, you know, we've moved on to other things, we've done to other things. I think we are always doing something every day. I remember, um, I was talking to Mark once, he said, every day, magic happens. And if that's the case, you know, I would like them, I'd, I'd like to spend more time talking about how magic happens. And, you know, not only how magic happens, but sometimes when the trick just didn't work. But, you know, how are we taking that learning experience and making it magic? So I think there's more to be done. But in the biggest, my biggest concern is we've talked about communication for years. And if we can have something front of mind right now, if we find that it falls into a, a more, um, appropriate structure, long-term, that's fine. But I think that when you talk about what we're asking to do, the motion of educating a child and how it's not what it used to be and where we are isn't necessarily where we even wanna be yet. We're not there. Technology is moving faster than we're buying it. All that stuff, it helps us to, to make that education to, to the parents, to the consumer about what we're trying to do, what we wanna do, what we need to do to do it, but not have it thrown down their throat over a four-week period during budgets. Because it's a seventy-two million dollars is a lot to take in. So is the analysis of, of data two weeks earlier from presenting budget. It's just so much information this time of year, spreading out and giving pieces of information throughout the year, I think, gives value. And we don't have to do it noteworthy news. It doesn't have to be a standing agenda item. But I think we need to talk about the magic that's happening and talk about it regularly and, and find a way to do that effectively.
Mr. Schneider.
Well, there is, there is validity to say, I'm saying it wrong. Don't imply that she's not valid, but what she's saying, we sort of do. Because during the year, we, we bring in, um, the schools to talk about what's going on. We bring, um, we've, we've got a, what, a quarterly now update on curriculum and things like that. So we're starting to, to bring it in, but we as board members can request agenda items to cover a topic, um, at any point in time during the year. So maybe what the action item for us is to propose some agenda topics that fall at other times of the year. Like maybe when it's all dead during the summer or whatever, and get some updates on where we are with, where we are with smarter balance, where we are with, um, you know, the, the curriculum overall, let alone in other stuff. You know, things like that, so, and I think, I think to the point is, is that if you put an agenda item, um, that covers it and covers it over a half hour where you can ask questions, get the knowledgeable people to table, it helps to actually do a better job of educating rather than just like a, I mean, all I, it's really weird, I had this in mind. Uh, Marge's, Marge's minute, where, you know, every meeting she would come and talk about what might have happened. I mean, that's not the right word, but that's sort of what the original conversation was. Share with us what happened at leadership this week or any other thing that might have occurred.
Where are all the marketing people in this?
Yeah, I don't know. But, but I, I think that as opposed, she, and she certainly does that on occasion, she gives us updates. But I think that by us coming up, you know, if we've got an agenda topic we'd like to talk about, we should do it.
And to that end though, we don't really have the leadership agenda to know what's, what's, what, what's being delved into. And I'm saying, of course, taking the stuff out that we shouldn't know because it's privacy or something. But just saying, you know, where the, where the big hot, button items that we are, you're dealing with on a week-to-week basis, you know, to help us.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, I think it's important for you to know that the leadership meetings really propel what happens at the board meetings. So in other words, this year, a major thrust has been on the implementation of EPEC. So we spend a lot of time on EPEC and the fact that, um, all the observations are different. Uh, the summary report is different, the way we've gone about business is different after thirty-five years of one evaluation plan. So if you just take that and say that we're trying to be about consistency and continuity across the district, I wouldn't come back to you and necessarily talk to you about what I did last Wednesday. It will come to you in a formal way when Mark gives a presentation on, um, how, what did you accomplish in the first year? How did you go about it? And perhaps testimony from some of the professional staff that went through the process or whatever. So in other words, it takes multiple leadership meetings to lead to a presentation here. Some of our meetings recently have been spent on budget. So we dissect the budget message that you all gave us. And we've been working on presentations, so it would seem, my goodness, you do that from year to year. But we also do refinement. We change. We've changed from how we used to do it. So a lot of the items that you get in final form have, have the trial runs and all the things that we're doing are preparatory to what happens here. So I don't want you to think that we do a lot of different things. We do, you know, kind of the major thing, curriculum. All the curriculum that you see when it's played out here and the teacher leaders come under Mark's direction. Um, we've spent time talking about the, the curriculum back at leadership and you see kind of, um, presentations about it. So we look at you as kind of a, um, I don't wanna call it the final presentation, but a presentation to you. And then off what you say, we go back to the drawing board and do modifications, so it's like ebb and flow. Um, and, you know, it, it prompts me to go back and look at my agendas or the last six months to call out the, the major topics. But I think what you see played out at this table is a good representation of what we're doing at leadership. We're just doing in preparation for you. To just do a summary. Would you say, my two colleagues sit right here who are with me every week, would you say that's representative? Or say anything else?
I, if I could, I would, I would say that's true. And also, you know, I mean, we all know, cause we talked about it at the board's table too, there are so many changes happening at the state level. And a lot of times, um, we spend a lot of time at leadership processing what these things mean. It's not, the, the subject of that isn't notable, you know, I mean, you know, we could say we, we talked about, um, you know, which we'll do next time, you know, the SAT, I mean, and that's what we did, you know. But I mean, what's notable about that, other than that we talked about it? So the thing that I'm, and, you know, I would just like to say is, because it may be, at least partially me who would be crafting this, I would wanna be able to know what I'm contributing to. And the, the concern that I, the question that I have has to do with, you know, kind of editing. Because the fact of the matter is for the quarterly reports, the curriculum reports, I mean, I have to make a decision about what you're gonna see. Um, because there couldn't possibly be enough time in a meeting, I mean, the last time was pretty heavy-duty. Um, but I wanted you to know a lot about what was going on, but I don't think you could sustain that four times. So I'm making choices, but I'm not sure I'm making the choices that are equal to what you wanna hear. And so then it becomes a question of either you're exhaustive, which could be exhausting for everybody, or, uh, it's just a list of things. And then that list could be sort of like these little tidbits and, oh, I wanna know more about that. And then you, you know, so then how far, so I'm not, just as a practical matter, um, I think it's always our judgment to determine, you know, what's, what's important. And we try to share it through the development of the agendas for, um, the meetings or through comment and so on. But it would just be ultimately a question of, it's whoever's the, the developer of the noteworthy minutes is gonna be editing. And they're gonna be making some choices. And so I, when, when Board Member Schneider was talking about, um, having the board direct, I think that's really interesting. Like, we would like to hear more and then it could be fashioned that way. That's not unlike what happens now, I think. But anyway, it was, it's just a question of editing and how much is too much and whether it's even what you want. Can, can I make a suggestion? Uh, at our last meeting, uh, we had talked about the fact that we might want to look at this. And, um, Ms. Guayumi, you've volunteered in the past to, to step up to do that. If it's a matter of having, um, some pre-work done in terms of a vision for what this might look like, that you could perhaps work with the superintendent and other board members to try to coalesce what this, you know, could be in terms of looking at communication strategy, assessing, right? Where we can do better, right? Where we can enhance. Um, and, you know, having that as an agenda topic for a subsequent board meeting, I think that would, uh, that would make great sense to do. Are, are you willing to do that?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Any further discussion on this? Okay. So we'll move then to item number twelve, uh, response to proposed New Hampshire School Board Association N H S B A resolutions. Um, at our, was it at our last meeting these were distributed? I can't recall when we distributed these at last meeting. Uh, we distributed the proposed, uh, resolutions, uh, that are going to be voted on at the January sixteenth Delegate Assembly that our delegate, uh, Vice Chair Barnes, uh, will be attending. Um, and, uh, at this meeting, um, we are to provide her with, uh, direction on how the Merrimack School Board, uh, would like to see her vote, um, at the assembly on these. In the past, uh, the easiest way of accomplishing this without walking the list was to see if anybody had, uh, a vote or wanted to propose a vote that was different than what the N H S B A, uh, recommendation was, so that we can deal with it rather by exception rather than by walking the full list and, and going through them one by one. Mr. Schneider.
So there's, there's two sections. There's the proposed resolutions.
Mm-hmm.
Which have a lot of detail. And then there's the proposed continuing resolutions. And there are several this time that they, they say readoption, not recommended. Can you, Shannon, provide a little bit more background on some of those?
Yes, um, there are a couple of them and actually there, uh, number four is a, um, is a perfect example. The New Hampshire School Boards Association supports legislation amending RSA ninety-one A to allow school boards to consider, discuss, strategize, and negotiate student tuition contracts confidentially consistent with applicable provisions of RSA ninety-one dash A two thousand and fifteen. So because of the passage of HB one forty-two, the legislation that it was resolving to support has been adopted. So we don't have to resolve to support it anymore. So it's done. So we wanna drop it because we don't have to do it. It's done.
So that would, that answers that one now.
Yes.
The first one, number one, about education funding.
Achieved by passage of, yeah, same thing, but as a Senate bill instead of a House bill.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. I was ready for that question today. Didn't think it was gonna be you, but I was ready for it.
It's well answered. So with that, are there any, um, items that the board would like to take up that differ with the existing recommendations? Okay? So with that, I think by consensus, what you have is, uh, the board's direction uh, to vote along with the New Hampshire School Board Association recommendations. And thank you for representing us there. And that will take us to item number twelve, thirteen other correspondence, any correspondence to come before the board. Okay, seeing none, we'll move to comments. Superintendent.
So the first comment I wanna make, um, has to do with the, the primary date, um, that's, uh, coming forward. Um, and that is February ninth, as you all know. And on that day, um, we will not have school in session. So that means that students will be off on that day, professional staff, support staff. But all our offices will be, um, open on that day. Um, I have been told by Town Moderator, um, Christensen that the polling site will be the all-purpose room of the upper elementary school. So I was waiting on that information from her before I officially informed the public. And our intention will be to use, uh, school messenger, um, to notify all parents as well as to give them a written communique of some sort. Um, our thought was, uh, we would also wait until after the holidays because people had a lot going on. And so now in the month of January, we're a month in advance. Um, so that's important to just clarify, February ninth, Tuesday.
Mr. Schneider.
So the message is gonna say that there is no school that day or just that voting is taking place?
There is no school that day if you.
Reset the calendar.
Yeah, if you look at the calendar, you'll see.
I know, it's a floating, but, but that was done with the assumption that we would be using the high school to vote. And therefore we'd have to, we couldn't have school in, in session. Because I remember we talked about, could you do the primary at the APR so we could hold school just like we do in, in April election or, or like the primary? So I guess the question is, since it's gonna be at the APR in the, in Mestacola Upper, do we still have to cancel school?
I would, um, say yes. Um, and the reason I'm gonna say that is, I think there is going to be a very large, um, turnout, um, for the polling. And I think, um, that parking at, in the church parking lot is not gonna be sufficient. I think people are gonna be parking in the high school parking lots and walking there. Um, I, I think it's going to be quite a huge turnout. And I think I, um, made the assumption, um, that the high school was going to be used because of the large amount of turnout. My understanding is if the entire electorate decided to vote, there would be eighteen thousand. I think there'll be less than that, but I do think there'll be a goodly number. Um, my understanding is that, um, the moderator feels that she would prefer just using the high school site in November, um, for the general election. Um, so, um, I would say, based on what I know, Andy, I think it is in our collective best interest. And I have marked the calendar as such and so.
Right, and, and I don't disagree because I'm very surprised to hear that it's gonna be at the, at the APR, J M U's and not at the high school. Because having acted as a assistant moderator at primary, at these before, there's a whole lot of people that show up, especially when there's a contested one like this, so I'm.
That's why I'm announcing it now.
No, 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 I know, I know. I, I, I think that you're appropriate in hedging our bets in canceling school because it could be chaos with.
Well, and, and just in terms of schedules, right? In order to definitively make that determination, um, I would think the board would want, uh, to meet with the moderator uh, to understand the anticipated volumes and whether it was manageable or not manageable and what the plans would be, et cetera. And we're now talking about a, you know, uh, an election that's taking place in about four weeks' time. So, um, to give enough advanced notice, um, to, to parents, um, it probably makes sense to keep with the schedule that we set, even though it was set under different assumptions. Yes?
And my second, um, is a, um, positive happening, I would say. Um, which is you have in your packet, um, a volume from the New Hampshire Art Educators Association, a volume of their magazine called Articles. And you will see on the front page, the highlighting of the Art Teacher of the Year for the State of New Hampshire, who is Mary Beth Donovan Olson, the art teacher at Reed's Ferry Elementary School. And then you will also see appended to it, she was asked as the teacher of the year, um, to take, um, standards and, um, to do a, a lesson plan that others in the. and, um, to do, uh, a lesson plan that others in the state could use. And so you see appended to this, the mono-leaf prints, um, that she put together. Um, so you could see a piece of her, a piece of her work. And you'll see that she goes to the National Art Education Association Conference in Chicago at the state, um, expense. Um, and so my hope is that she will be able to come before you, perhaps in April or May, so that she can talk to you about her experience for those of you who haven't had the pleasure of meeting her.
That would be great. Any other comments? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move to item fourteen, new business. Mr. Schneider.
So I don't know whether this is new business or comment, so I'm straddling the line on this one. So I have...
I'll reopen thirteen comments.
Okay. Um, I don't have any, any, um, committee reports. But the committee, committee that's happening next Monday is planning and building. At the previous meeting with planning and building, they asked whether they were going to receive a charge from the school board to do any sort of analysis or marketing around the track. And we have not, we have not talked about, about that topic at all. And I realize we're, we don't have a meeting between now and then, except for the budget one.
Right. Um, so I hadn't, so this sounds like new business. Um, the one...
I told you I was straddling the line on this.
We're straddling the line. Um, we have discussed at joint meeting, um, a potential charge, which we, with full agendas, we've been trying to figure out where to fit it in related to the property potentially, right? Uh, to have them look at a needs assessment and, and figure out what do we want to do in two thousand and eighteen, right, when, when the lease is up. Um, that's one potential charge. There may be other potential charges for planning and building. Uh, I'll admit, I hadn't even considered having them market the track. Um, but we can certainly consider any and all charges for, for planning and building. I actually think there's some others that we may want to have them look at related to fields and property.
Right. I, I, the only reason I'm bringing this up is because when I look at their meeting next time and what we're looking at for budgeting for this year, that's the only thing that they've shown any desire to assist us with, short-term, which is part of the budget and, and the, the process. So I just wanted to make sure that we, that nobody on the board had any request specifically to have them do anything around the track.
The first I've heard it.
And, 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 and that's my fault for not, because they did bring it up last time, but I guess because we haven't met in two months, I just didn't bring it, but...
Thank you. Um, so as long as we're on, uh, new business, um, one of the other topics that was brought up at, uh, the last meeting was, um, uh, the high school and a suggestion to use dogs, uh, drug sniffing dogs at the high school. And what we're trying to do is get on the, uh, January eighteenth agenda, a discussion of, uh, the situation at the high school and, um, what's being done, what other solutions exist. Um, looking at, trying to get, uh, Principal Johnson, um, he's lined up, um, Merrimack Safeguard and as well, uh, the chief and, and maybe Detective Murray um, or some combination, uh, to go through all of that. Um, so shooting for the eighteenth, we've gotten some lined up, not all. And then the other piece of, uh, it's not really new business, uh, but I think it kind of falls there is, um, for our meeting on Thursday, um, in terms of schedule, if the board is interested in getting, uh, rec, recommendations for additional areas, uh, for reduction in the budget, I would ask that, uh, each, each member come prepared to the meeting to discuss, um, a target and whether in fact that's your desire, so that we can have that discussion. And that gives you enough time, hopefully? Till, till Tuesday? Excellent. Any other new business to come before the board? No? Seeing none, we'll move to item fifteen, committee reports. Was the holidays. No committee reports. Excellent, we'll close that. Uh, that takes us to item sixteen, public comments on agenda items. Seeing none. We will close that. We will take a moment to sign the manifest. And I will entertain a motion to enter non-public session per RSA ninety-one hyphen A colon three, Roman numeral two, A, B, and C. Is there a motion made by Mr. Schneider, seconded by Vice Chair Barnes? This is a roll call vote. Ms. Gualyumi, how do you vote?
In favor.
Mr. Schneider.
In favor.
Vice Chair Barnes.
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. So the motion carries four, zero, zero. And out of curiosity, what is the student rep's opinion?
In favor.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, everyone. Good night.